Okay, we're live.
Welcome to the February eighth, twenty twenty-two City Council meeting. Vote call please. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Rule will be revised, gentle please. Move approval of the agenda as revised. Attention, discussion. As this brings us to special presentations. Proclamation declaring February as Black History Month.
I got it. City of Hazel Park, a proclamation declaring Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and practices made by African-Americans, African-tribal, cultural, spiritual, and political revolvers. And whereas, Black History Month throughout the establishment in nineteen twenty-six of Negro his- Negro History Week, I Carter G. Wilson and the Association Study of African-American Lives of History. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and those decided that it was up to them to address. And whereas, the city of Hazel Park continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, respectfully recognize their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. The city of Hazel Park is proud to honor the history and practice of African-Americans, our state, and across our nation. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Hazel Park, hereby proclaim February twenty-twenty-two to be Black History Month, to encourage all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and positive.
Proclaiming February as Black History Month. In recognition of the memory, the eightieth anniversary of Hazel Park.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. My pleasure also at this time to welcome members of the Hazel Park Historical Commission, and they're gonna be our next to them. And I want to thank them for the wonderful display that they put on. Memory to keep that. A resolution commemorating the eightieth anniversary of Hazel Park. Whereas, in February nineteen forty-two, the City of Hazel Park Incorporated dropped its 14th year, giving official stats to growing a unique community of that Hazel Park that was thriving in the southeast corner of Royal County. And whereas, that special community of hardworking citizens that foresight to understand the benefits of this joint corporation. And in the dark days after Pearl Harbor in nineteen forty-one, looked optimistically to the future and voted to approve Hazel Park's charter, laying the groundwork for what will become a fully functioning city with its own history and tradition. And whereas, throughout the last eight decades, Hazel Park has been home to tens of thousands of residents, each with their own aspirations and dreams, each with their own unique set of people, places, and times that make up their own memories of Hazel Park. And hopefully, many recalling those memories of Hazel Park will find them again. And whereas, while the built landscape of Hazel Park has changed throughout the decades, the tough, friendly, hardworking character of our city will remain constant, with our strong sense of community helping Hazel Park to weather financial crises, natural disasters, wars, and pandemics, and emerge from those challenges stronger than ever. And whereas, eighty years after incorporation, Hazel Park once again looks optimistically toward the future. Once more, we are a thriving community with new industries creating jobs and wealth, with new educational opportunities for our students, with our outstanding city services, and with a strong sense of inclusion that welcomes all, asking only respect for all in return. So, now therefore be it resolved, Hazel Park City Council hereby honors and commemorates the eightieth anniversary of the City of Hazel Park Incorporated. We thank the Historical Commission for their efforts to publicize our city's history. And we pledge that we'll be good stewards of our city so that future generations may celebrate Hazel Park's founding in perpetuity.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion to adopt this resolution commemorating the eightieth anniversary of Hazel Park. Move to adopt the resolution commemorating the eightieth anniversary of Hazel Park. Discussion? I'd like to thank the Historical Commission for doing a great, wonderful job in the ongoing and, uh, census committee board. All right, it moves to the Hazel Park Historical Commission. Give us a presentation if you'd like.
I don't know if she can, she's wearing her up. I'm just gonna stand there and look silly.
Stand there and make me look better. Hi, I'm Sherri Durcy, um, board member of the Hazel Park Historical Commission.
Chris Gerby, another board member, longtime board member, and chairman, chairman.
Uh, we would first like to invite all the council members who have already stopped by and the rest of the city to visit the museum on February seventeenth and nineteenth, be able to see the birthday display. Um, and we would also like to then a birthday card to the, uh, council. It will be available for your signature and anybody else who wants to sign, and we're going to display it in the museum for the duration of the month.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Um, what hour is on the seventeenth and the nineteenth? Um, the seventeenth is Thursday, and that will be six to eight.
Six to eight.
And Saturday, Saturday the nineteenth is ten to two.
Very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I had an opportunity to spend some time with the Historical Commission, uh, on Saturday and to the display. Uh, so I spent some time with Sherri and Dan Durcy and, uh, Chris Gerby and, uh, Ben Crumf, who I don't see here today, but he was also there. And, uh, I want to thank all the members for their hard work on the display and all the cool things they're doing over the years. So, thank you very much.
This is to our Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, as you know, glad to see the Historical Commission here. We're also happy to welcome the, uh, Hazel Park Recreation Advisory Board. As you know, uh, did both to have, uh, the, uh, committees come and make a presentation, uh, here at the basis. And, uh, they're here tonight to make a presentation. They also have some timely, uh, I think, recommendations if they would like to communicate to the council. So, uh, I would like to invite, uh, Serene Papian and Tina Fidel, uh, to the podium, also Derek Gageo and Tom Jones are here, uh, as well. They're also members of the, uh, Historical Commission. Over to, uh, Serena and Tina.
Tina Caddell, our, um, amazing Recreation Advisory Board member, and she's here to speak on behalf of the board.
City council and city staff members, um, you just introduced me, so you know who I am. But it is wonderful to see you in person for a while. Um, at our January meeting, we were talking about the good probability of having a carnival and parade, and hopefully this during this year. And we discussed all those logistics about that. Um, and one in particular was the short news of the parade route released from Junior High, go up to Nine Mile, to the top of the nar, and then west of the middle heights, the Union Majors. Junior High is a great staging place, the one thing, uh, and a shorter, shorter distance would be helpful to not only, um, those who are walking, they could ride their bikes, uh, especially help the band members that are carrying heavier instruments and equipment. And then it's easy enough for the families that are between eight and nine miles to scoot up between nine and would look like to find places, there's plenty of parking, also bring their families and friends and coworkers or whatever with them, uh, which suggests it out. And I think it's a, a real nice viewing place to enjoy it as well, because there's a lot of activity in there. I enjoyed being in the parade at the half of my lion's club, uh, which I'm part of also, when it was last held, and we did happen to start that at Junior High, we did a construction building along the freeway, that they might really, and I think that it worked out well. Um, and in addition, a shorter route helps to facilitate getting on the bus if you're tired, both by the GTW and our police department not having to monitor a whole other mile, you know, leaving, you know. I think it's helpful. Uh, the Recreation Board did approve having this change to the further series, uh, at January, uh, meeting, and that's even an interesting, uh, thoughtful consideration. I also want to take our, uh, thank our recreation, uh, community and the wonderful work we've been doing and praise our staff for that hard work as well. Uh, that they have done since COVID, the key part programs, moving forward, and he spoke some times, and a lot of colleagues others, but at least they were kept moving forward. They're not only pleasant to work with, they're very accommodating. Uh, I, you know, Ben and I are the residents in many, many years of one way or another, and they're all going to accept some new ideas, uh, to explore things, to do research for us, and see where we can go in the future. That's why you're here.
And I, I support everything, you know. It's called, I'm your elder.
Thank you, Bobbie. Thank you very much.
To you, I have members of council, I do want to, uh, thank the Recreation Board, uh, for their hard work, and, uh, they show up to things, uh, when we have special events. I just saw Tina at the, uh, winter, what was it, the Blizzard, uh, Blizzard Blast, uh, the other weekend, and it was great to see everybody there, and, uh, they put in a substantial amount of work. Uh, Tom Jones and, uh, Derek Gageo, which employees also sit on this, uh, important advisory committee, and they put in a lot of time off there, uh, for recreation events as well, and very generous with their time and expertise. Any questions for anybody that's here?
Thank you for your time and service. We appreciate it. Let's move to the, uh, civic announcements, the open, uh, civic announcements and civic announcements for the audience.
Yeah, we, uh, we mentioned you then before, but, uh,
Up then.
You're, uh, you have anything to say about the, uh, Historical Museum? I already thanked you in assentia, but, uh, you're here now.
Welcome to the board.
And thank you for all that you did. And my picture of Ben and I on Facebook, I need a step school to stand next to it.
My name is Ben Crumf, I'm fourteen oh six, I'm a, I'm the co-chair of the Hazel Park Historical Commission. Uh, I was just wanting to shout out to everybody here and everybody out in here in that world on video, that, uh, we are having a birthday celebration all this month. We have other celebrations planned throughout the year to keep it high, or here out and around. Um, it's been eighty years for Hazel Park, so that's a big mark for a city like this. I would say, um, we're at the crossroads of great things once again. And it was a long hard road for Hazel Park to become a city, you look into the history of it all. So, I think we've done great things, and hopefully we do a lot more great things. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to keep the museum open and going, and, uh, I'll see all of you there one day.
Like, thank you very much. You are, you are genuinely appreciated, that's, uh, Sherri, Dan, and Chris.
Any other civic announcements?
Also, I want to recognize, uh, Elizabeth Baldwin came in from the rep board, she was also here as well.
Any other civic announcements? Civic announcements from council. The civic council is opening up public discussion. Anyone from the public, uh, audience, like to speak, or if you can line up to the, what do you mean, in that? We're kind of gone. Thank you. I'd like to move us on to the consent agenda, one through ten on the re- live agenda, and like to point out any needs. I get a motion to, uh, move, among approval of the consent agenda items, move to, uh, the board with a, with a presentation from Serene Papian on number eight. Welcome back.
Thank you so much. I didn't know I was gonna make a presentation, but.
Well, it's a big deal.
Um, essentially, we are just raising our rates, um.
This one is, uh, which one do you want to hear, Bob? The authorization of the, of the grant.
Oh, my apologies. Uh, this is just a resolution essentially stating that we will give the money if we are to win this grant from Oakland County Park, which I certainly hope we do. Um, but just being able to say that we will provide the money. The grant at large, we are applying for sixty-two thousand, but only Hazel Park would match seventeen thousand, or sixteen thousand, excuse me. So, we're saying that we will do that if we win it.
It's a big deal. Let's pop it up some more, maybe.
Well, it's my first year applying to this grant. It's the first year Oakland County Park has had this grant, or the, the Parks Commission has put it forward to the, uh, city, towns, and villages in Oakland County. And I just took the initiative. I look at baseball, I'm a number one every day, and Mankers Park, and I know how utilized it is by our community. And, um, even basic infrastructure improvement costs a lot for any city, let alone our city and our department. So, just, I applied for three features, and, um, the scoreboard could be renovated, and I thought that may be, um, something that.
Please, any approval here would make those features fly.
Yeah, I considered our financial situation as a city. I didn't over, um, she, she'd be a matching amount, and I just kind of applied for it when I thought.
And you did a good job of the application, and update, I don't even know if you're aware of this or not, uh, but I did have a chance to meet with, uh, county commissioner Gary McGilvery, who's based on the district, and he was like the, uh, next town commissioner. And, uh, he is the chair of the committee that hand out those grants, and he's very supportive of that grant. So, my fingers are crossed that we'll be very successful on that, and that we're gonna, I told him how, uh, pleased we have been with the level of support that we received from county parks. And, uh, you know, it's, uh, we want to continue to, uh, build that relationship and get as many services and as much programming as we can.
So, a conversation with Mr. McGilvery last week, and it was very remarkable.
That's great, and they've been nothing but supportive, um, just from the last, uh, event that we had, uh, the Blizzard Blast, we had two hundred attendees. And even for Oakland County, that was impressive, and that was their number. Um, so, you know, I'm impressed with that as well, and it was really something to see, um, people coming down from the sled hills, coming to the event, going to the playground. It was awesome. It was a good event, and we had snow, which helped. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Welcome passing on the consent agenda, and move us to the administrative reports. Public pure, water supply amendment, HPM CCH, page thirteen point zero four, water supply system, second reading. Mayor, we are requesting you approve this in second reading. I'm sure, it's a pleasure. Scott, this is three. Listen, I'll move approval, excuse me. Move approval of the request to amend ordinance thirteen point zero four point one four zero, raise the interest rate to three percent on pass due water bill bill. For.
Uh, I, I have a question for, sorry, Tom, I'm sorry. Um, so in the record that you gave us, um, it's currently at one percent, but it also says that we are not, we haven't in the tax utilized that one percent. Is there a reason why we're not seeking to use that one percent towards and just jumping to three percent?
Well, I checked around with other cities, Warren. And, uh, we ran the numbers, one percent is higher than what's trying to be.
I just feel like I just jumped, and I, again, I I don't enjoy, I don't, I do not personally support, uh, I think people that are already having to be, you know, that's a. All right, thank you so much.
The reporting, the report, vote call, vote please on the other one. Councilmember DeRosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bondo?
Yes.
Your birthday on the call?
Yes.
Councilmember Bondo?
No.
Mayor Buck?
Yes.
Motion passes. Orders to amend HPM C, uh, or CH twelve point five, street maintenance park regulations, first reading.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, this form allows us our authority to write, street maintenance ticket to people who have parked in their yard rather than having to write the much larger, uh, vehicle storage ticket. So, we launch an incentive, people to get their, uh, vehicles off the road. We don't launch an incentive until we do them on. So, uh, it's charged at the same amount. Now, we still write the vehicle storage ticket if, uh, the vehicle is left there in the yard on a prolonged basis, that kind of good storage. But I think creating this modification is more fit for a long fall.
Okay.
I have a question. Uh, for people that have been written a birth ticket, uh, yes, how, uh, would you get it, I, okay, or whatever, are we going to be able to cancel those?
I don't think you have any outstanding, and we can't go back at all. It was kind of, uh, one of the unfortunate hallmarks of the American jurisprudence system. We can look at, you know, uh, take that into consideration if it's due, but we can't go back.
Well, we have, we actually have been looking at the circumstances on a case of these cases, and everyone is addressed on those, um, that in circumstances. There's the, excuse me, ticket that has the number of the circumstances, and when they were treated this way.
If they were appealed.
There a motion on this?
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to amend title twelve, street by mark of some safety, chapter fifty, street maintenance, section one five fifty. Ten, street maintenance, press regulations, field enforcement, vehicle, uh, city.
Support. Any discussion, discussion?
I just want to say that I really appreciate going, going and making this a more equitable rate that, that is a, a big, something that is a much more reasonable, uh, policy. And I'm really grateful to the city, our GTW and our school are great for, um, working really hard last season so that we had more opportunities and more parking, um, opportunities for people to, you know, register for it. I think it worked out nicely, and I think that, I think that makes a lot of sense. I thank you guys. All you worked out.
You know, the most important thing is communication. The building and code department, the enforcement officers, the city, we're all here to, to help the residents in our community. And so, communication is always key.
Do you have any comments? The passes. In three orders to amend HPM CCH at five point four two landlord's and tenant's portion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is an amendment that will require the designation of a responsible individual, and we have to take the landlord. In other words, you have to have a human being that is responsible for landlord license, rather than simply, uh, an LLC corporation.
I move to adopt an ordinance to amend title five, business licenses and regulations, chapter forty-two, landlord's and tenant's section five point four two point zero one zero. To include responsible party slash agent as part of the definition of a landlord, and section five point four two point zero one five, states that designated responsible party or agent must comply with chapter and add five point four two point zero one six. Requiring the designation of a responsible party slash agent, amend section five point four two point zero three five to add a provision to a landlord application as a link to responsible party agent. Amend five point four two point zero seven six to include responsible party agent in violation notice order to correction and inspection. Amend five point four two point zero seven seven states that the responsible party agent must comply with the tax enforcement actions that are taken against the responsible party agent. And that's one, five point four two, and, long, yeah, yeah, and include responsible party agent in the notice provision under, support.
That's a long, but it was a little thorough. That is the, that is the longest motion in, I think, in the history of. Well, we do, we saw it through.
Any, essentially more discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, this, uh, councilor Bondo, Bondo can go if he wishes, but in a summary, what this does is it, uh, amends the, uh, human rights ordinance, conversion therapy, and also prohibits the capitalization of, uh, being a member of the LGBTQ.
Council?
I move adoption of an ordinance to amend eighteen, human rights of the City of Hazel Park Municipal Code of Ordinance at chapter eighteen point zero three, prohibition of conversion therapy, sections eighteen point zero three point zero one zero through eighteen point zero three point zero nine zero, and provide penalties to violate. Support.
More discussion? Attention? Asses.
Chris thinks that's motion.
Show cause hearing on one one eight West Bernard. Do you want to hear about the city one one eight West Bernard?
There's no one here, the mayor might to open up. Any wish to speak on that?
Speak on the property. See, no one would close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, this property is substantially dilapidated, and we recommend, uh, the following motion based upon recommendation of the building official. The concern of public health, safety, and welfare to the Hazel Park community and for reasons indicated by the building official, is recommended that the City Council affirm the hearing officer's order to demolish the structures on a real property known as one one eight West Bernard Avenue. And the administration respects the request.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, based on the recommendation of the building official, uh, the concerns in public health, safety, and welfare to the Hazel Park community, and for the reasons indicated above, it is recommended to the, to the City Council affirm the hearing. Are you reading the wrong thing?
It's kind of good. All you need to do is they still move that for what I said.
Don't.
Or, any more discussion, comment, discussion? Uh, boards of commissions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, pursuant to the annual terms of office for the board review, uh, the administration respected request the appointment of Gary Harrison, Mike Matticelli, and Ron Nagy. We gotta have them, because they're starting, uh, so, so they need to. You need your proofing.
They gotta be.
Yeah, just to open a motion to somebody.
I move, uh, reappointment of Gary Harrison, Mike Matticelli, and Ron Nagy.
Support. Discussion?
Uh, start looking, uh, Mike Matticelli has been a wonderful board member of this, uh, program for many years. He had signaled on six tire to leave the board, but that two or three years, and we keep asking him to stay. This is a very important board, meets for long periods of time, we really need to have, uh, you know, it's something to, to give a lot of thought to. These three individuals have been just fantastic, all of that to, you know, very grateful to that, for continuing to serve. This is a, this is a big time commitment, and it's a lot of work. I hope that we can convince him to keep going for another couple of years, uh, but we're gonna have to start thinking about it, certainly. So, also for boards and commissioners, uh, since we have them all here tonight, the administration will recommend the appointment of, uh, Tom Jones, Tina Caddell, and Derek Gageo to the.
I'll make a motion, uh, to reappoint Tom Jones, Tina Caddell, and Derek Gageo.
More discussion, additions?
We don't think, I don't think this is up. We don't think, I don't think this is up. Was the ball going up still? No.
Your exchange signal?
Yeah.
Okay. Then again, they do a fantastic job.
Mr. Klobuchar?
Yes.
Please come to the podium and the microphone. Here, annual performance review. I mean, it's a 20-year review, sir.
This is a proclamation honoring Edward Klobuchar's career as city manager for the last 20 years in Hazel Park and his volunteerism. Whereas Edward George Klobuchar, a lifelong resident of Hazel Park, began his involvement with the city government before he graduated high school. Working for the Hazel Park Rec Department as part-time sports official and program supervisor. And whereas, after leaving the recreation department, Mr. Klobuchar continued to be involved with the city as a volunteer. Serving on several municipal boards and commissions, he also served as Hazel Park's Reserve Auxiliary Police Officer for 10 years. Rising to the rank of Auxiliary Lieutenant and earning several commendations for his service as. And whereas, Mr. Klobuchar returned to the city of Hazel Park in 2000, serving as Special Project Coordinator, Assistant City Manager, and Acting City Clerk prior to his appointment as City Manager. And whereas, Mr. Klobuchar was appointed City Manager of Hazel Park in February 2002. Contributing full-time or the permanent time for the city during the last, during his 20-year tenure. As City Manager, Mr. Klobuchar guided Hazel Park through several budget pricisms and worked tirelessly to lay the foundation for the city's ongoing red signs. Mr. Klobuchar is an enthusiastic inventor and innovator who has contributed immensely to making Hazel Park a dynamic community. Frankly, his accomplishments are too long to list. Whereas, Mr. Klobuchar has consistently enhanced leadership, leadership skills. Through continuing education in 2006, Mr. Klobuchar earned a highly competitive Talbotan Fellowship to attend and complete the senior executive in the state local government program at Harvard University's Kennedy School of Delaware. He also attended Saginaw Valley's eight certified public managers program and received a Dorsey Askew Award for his half-stone project. Further, Mr. Klobuchar is a graduate of the FBI Citizen Academy. And whereas, while serving as City Manager, Mr. Klobuchar still finds time to volunteer for numerous boards and committees and advocate, an advocate for the interests of Hazel Park. Mr. Klobuchar served as a gubernatorial appointee to the Michigan Board of Psychology from 2002 to 2006. He was elected president of the Michigan Suburbs Alliance and was a member for the Michigan Municipal League Board of Directors from 2013 to 2016. Mr. Klobuchar also was a member of the Michigan's Treasury Task Force and Municipal Finance Department in 2013. Importantly, Mr. Klobuchar was appointed by the Michigan State Majority Leader to serve on the Hazel Park Maintenance Board of Directors. He is a guest lecturer on municipal finance students at the University of Michigan, Wayne State University, and Saginaw Valley University. Whereas, Mr. Klobuchar's record of public service is unmatched in the history of Hazel Park. He has served Hazel Park with honor, great distinction, forming close bonds with the residents and business owners of his community during his tenure as Hazel Park's longest-serving City Manager. Mr. Klobuchar demonstrated unique dedication, preservation, preserving. Through much adversity, he served as a mentor to many and contributes positivity and professional development of those around him. So therefore be resolved, I, the mayor, Michael Left, on behalf of the city council, the city employees, the citizens of Hazel Park, do hereby extend our sincere appreciation, deep gratitude for Edward Klobuchar's 20 years of faithful and outstanding service, which undoubtedly has contributed to the betterment of our city.
Yes, you all know how much I love to fight. Look, I just want to say that serving as City Manager in the past 20 years has been one of the great honors of my life. And I want to thank, nobody serves a term that long on their own. And I want to thank the members of council that I've served with. I want to thank the outstanding department heads and employees that I have the privilege to work with throughout the years. I thank the residents of Hazel Park who always answer the call in the darkest hours of this, in bad millages when we need to, and those millages laid the groundwork for the success that we're having today. So like I said, having served in this position is one of the great honors of my life. I've served the city of Hazel Park in some capacity or another since, within the air set, since I was in high school. And even after my turn as City Manager is over, I will probably still stay involved in the future. So again, like I said, I am humbled. I have to thank my wonderful employees, so many of whom are here tonight. I, I am truly blessed with the best department heads in the state of Michigan. I say it often because I can't say it enough. And I also want to thank you five members of the city council. Truly is a pleasure working for you five. Some of my colleagues have absolute horror stories for some of the crazy elected officials that they have to work for and have worked for in the past. And I've got to say that I'm working with, you know, five very professional people who have the best interest of the city of Hazel Park at heart. And again, I'm very grateful for this resolution. I will treasure it. And like I said, being here has been one of the big honors of my life. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank my wife, Diane, who has put up with this whole crazy job that I've had for, you know, the past 20 years plus of being part of the city of Hazel Park. And I appreciate the sacrifices that she's made, that my stepkids made when they were growing up with my absences and things like that, and how they were always willing to pitch in and volunteer when they really wanted to or not when we had so many things to do. And I want to let them know, back at home, I couldn't doubt about them either. Thank you all. I look forward to serving for a few more years, and let's make some great things happen for the city of Hazel Park.
Three cases from the department heads, anyone wishing to come up and speak? Or I'll talk to one. Welcome, Tim.
I'll speak for all of you. I'll do my best. Just on Monday, back in September, we had discussed about the Service Landlord Program and the NLC, COVID and delays in the holiday season. They were a little slow on getting the information going. They have completed, they've notified me, they're going to start sending out information later this month, but it's fine. Heck, yeah, we're going to put that on social media just to get people more heads up and maybe you see the information in the mail that the city is behind with the program. And we will, we will also do that. That's a superficial, because we, like I said, I didn't have a chance to put that in the traffic.
I appreciate that you've done this research and brought this to the city because I am currently dealing with this issue. So I need this little line. But yes, and it's a very, very expensive issue. Luckily, initially they caught the break of the underline. I appreciate you doing this, Barbara.
So just making sure it was somebody trusted.
Right.
It was a tough one.
Do you have any estimates of the premium?
No, I don't. It's like eight hours a month.
Eight hours a month?
I think so.
We should put that on every resume.
Well, they only do anything through the city, they put it off through the eight. You know, if the word alcohol.
That's not bad. Recovery, one big event, you spend more than that.
I will tell you my experience with Berkeley, and this program has been thank you the last in Berkeley, and people have really great conversations with it. Like, they are so glad they participated, so.
Yeah, it is, Derek Schuler in Berkeley. And great help in letting me know what we need to know about the group and how it works. And the city's, you know, it is not a city program, but it's something that they put out and it has worked.
It is a firm, I'm going to thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
And then I want to run a discussion of our workers here and the city of City Manager. Congratulations. That's a long time, actually you interviewed me way back when, a time ago. I've hired every one of you. That's a long time. I wanted to give a real special thank you to a few of my coworkers, my crew members that have really, really gone above and beyond what we do. Scott Reese, Michael Booker, and Rick Castleman, this past month has been a bear. Scott, for instance, put in over 20 straight work days, day and night, working on water running repairs, frozen pipe issues. But Michael Booker came in cold second under 15 days, and Rick pulled off 12 with a day between six. These gentlemen worked tirelessly to keep the system going. They answered the phone, they're on site within half hour, 45 minutes, and taking care of their business. And just want to make sure that this doesn't go unnoticed out there. It's been miserable cold, extremely cold. And tonight, I'm hoping they're just at home with their food, their products, and having a hot chocolate and a nice meal. So, yeah, tomorrow morning for everybody again, but if you've seen my guys in passing, please thank them, and I think I really would appreciate that.
Any other City Manager? Oh, sorry, any other?
Any other department?
I just want to.
Well, there may be a future running.
You could turn this into a roast.
Anybody else have anything from their departments to bring up? Jared, you're usually not here, do you have anything to bring up?
I guess I can bring up one thing.
Okay.
We are looking to increase our, our freight fees at this meeting, hopefully.
Yeah, they approve.
Um, oh, very good. So the reason being, just because we are, the pricing is archaic compared to all of our neighbors. My wonderful employee, Amanda Taylor, who should get a shout out as well, told all of the numbers from the neighboring communities, that their car rentals, how they did it, whether it was in a block or not, and so forth, block rate, and our just didn't even compare. So here we are, raising rates, and we think that's a benefit to everyone. Thanks for approval.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We will close the department head's discussion here. Move on to the city attorney, Alyssa. Happy birthday. Let's all sing, happy birthday to you. There we go, we got to smile a little more. I said you needed a smile when you came back.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate you for 20 years of wonderful service. Not only do I work here, but I live here, and I've been here for a very, very long time. And it's really, really wonderful to see how Hazel Park has been managed and how it's been growing stronger and stronger even during the tough times. I'm so proud to live here, and I'm so proud to work with all of you and to serve our community. We truly are the strength of our community, and Ed, you are an amazing mentor and manager and leader, and it's your guidance and support that helps all of us to be the best we can be to do our jobs, to serve the community that we all love so much. So thank you very much, Ed. And thank you, Diane, for putting up the volume up.
Thank you. Mr. Klobuchar?
You know, I, I don't know what I can add, but I looked at that card, and, you know, I read all your comments, and I thank you very much. And I read Andy's little handwritten note that he wrote me. And he talked about 20 years ago, and who knew that it was gone like this when I was hired. And it was a very contentious time in the city of Hazel Park, and three public officials made a grave choice. And again, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for, you know, Andy with your own mic left and Jack Lloyd making that tough decision in 2002. And I'll never forget any of you, and I will always remember the confidence that you had in me. Thank you.
And when you didn't have it, you're sorry. Mr. Klobuchar did my job.
Please forget that part. Oh, forgive my language, being City Manager of Hazel Park was somewhat of a shit show. There were between Dan Potter, who served for 13 years and was the previous record holder, and myself, there were nine different individuals that was a hot manager, either active, acting, or permanent to begin. And it was.
It was a hot seat.
You know, I figured, you know, I'd come in, I'd stabilize things, put the ship right, and then go back on what, you know, my intended rear trajectory was. I'm glad that I stayed, just as I said, it was the honor of my life, and one of the most fulfilling jobs that anybody could ever have. I've always had a lifetime commitment to the city. And again, I'm grateful that I've been able to serve it in the way that I have now. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Faces to the persons on.
I wanted to congratulate her birthday. She's gonna put her birthday, so thank you so much for being here on her birthday. I hope it was wonderful. I want to thank our historical commissioners for coming out tonight and for planning this year's celebration for the 80th birthday of Hazel Park. I want to congratulate again our manager on 20 years of service. That proclamation was long, but your service to this city was longer. So, you know, there's only so much that we can confess, that really kind of all of the great things that you've done for the city. So thank you so much for your, your patience, and then your not patience sometimes. I know we sometimes butt heads, but it makes for, I think, better communication, and it really benefits our city to have such a drawing on it. I also wanted to thank the city for recognizing Black History Month, and I wanted to let everybody know that our historical commission is also hosting a virtual Black History Month event with Quinn Wright. He was historically appointed to Madison Heights this year, City Council. On the February 24th, 6:00 p.m., the event is on Facebook, so check that out. And then I also wanted to thank all of our departments for really buckling down during this cold February, cold January that we had, really coming to task and meeting the challenges that we always experience this time of year, but we still are surprised by every season. And really thank our community for taking care of each other, looking out for each other, struggling their walk, and checking on neighbors. Just don't forget checking on neighbors, especially when you still have a year. And everybody, thank, thank, drag flow, and look out for each other.
Thank you. Councilman Bondo?
Happy birthday, Melissa. I'd like to recognize Tom and his team for our snow emergency, the roads were quickly plowed. There was a lot of really, really excellent communication from our city staff, residents, and consistently, and I think it's all us, we all got really great feedback from.
and consistently, and I think it's all of us, we all got really great feedback from our residents of how well everything was handled. So, I want to thank you and your team. Ed, you have been to be manager for more than half of my life, which is absolutely.
I've been manager for more than a third of my life.
To have twenty years of service in anything, let alone to a community that is only four times that old, honestly remarkable. And you gave a lot of deference and credit to your staff, who you hired. And your staff is ultimately a reflection of you, and I just want to thank you for all you've done for this city in honesty in my very short tenure. You've been remarkable, just colleague and friend, and then just really faithful for your presence here. I'm excited to let you do. Jimmy has been quietly but very diligently putting a minute from all of our past council meetings, from the past several years, onto the city website to make sure that he knows that that has not gone unnoticed. And I just really want to shout it out for an increased level of transparency to our residents and to the community. Then lastly, if you blinked and missed it, tonight we did pass a conversion therapy plan, and the fact that it was okay and didn't have a whole lot of comment, really, is a reflection of our community's welcoming and inclusive attitude towards the LGBTQ community. I did want to call out two different parts in the ordinance. One, that being lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer is not a disease, disorder, illness, deficiency, or shortcoming, and that the city has a compelling interest in protecting the physical and psychological well-being of LGBTQ minors and protecting them from conversion therapy in the city, limiting the risk of harms caused by exposure to conversion therapy. In the state of Michigan, there are only five communities currently that have a human rights ordinance, as well as a provision on conversion therapy. Very proud that the home of two residents who helped achieve same-sex marriage nationwide are going to become the city community. And additionally, I'd like to mention that I wish that this is completely unnecessary because our bills in the Michigan House and the Senate that would amend the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act do not provide anti-discrimination protection for the LGBTQ community, as well as prohibit conversion therapy. And as always, I encourage everyone to reflect their limitations, do the right thing by our rights.
I just want to echo all of a sudden, it's happy birthday, Monica. Congratulations, Ed. Part of what I had said, who would have imagined what layout was twenty years ago? And I believe it's the Grateful Dead. What a long, strange trip it's been.
That is for sure.
You know, the things that, you know, done too many things to list.
We knew it was bad. What we didn't know was how bad it was until we got the honors in here and really.
Yeah.
It was really bad.
We looked, people may not know this, and we will not remember this, but they were going to attempt to recall us for having fired the city manager and put you in, and he started to recall, and it didn't go anywhere. They all found out we were riter than we thought. So, anyway, thank you to all of the staff, everybody that helped make this a surprise for Ed, and for all your hard work throughout the years. I ended the message to Ed as much love it. So, I'll end this with, if you love somebody, tell them. If you have children, hold them every day and tell them. Thank you for coming on.
Here, put a hand up.
Thank you. I, too, would like to echo all of this, that happy birthday, Monica. And congratulations, Ed, for twenty long years. And to several more. Several? You?
You? Tom?
I have to agree with Luke on, in my opinion, if you go somewhere and you have bad customer service, it's from there. And one of the things that residents help all the time is how helpful all city employees are, and, you know, friendly and will stop to help. And I think that comes from, so I would like to thank everyone for all their hard work, but for the other, I think, so, thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to all of our administration for doing the hard work, being professional, preparing, and passing it on to your staff underneath. It shows across the board, and we do it here all the time. How nice, sincere the police, the fire, the E W water, even the city clerk's office as well, all their department. You hear how nice, you know, everybody, for years, we always heard, "Ed, oh, they were so insidious." Well, sometimes, some people make it that way. Our city employees are here every day. They work hard, they strive to do the job professionally, and that's a tribute. Those, you know, how hard it is to go to the same job every day. We've all been there. You try to make the best of it, and you do the best job you can, and be as nice as you can as professionally. And that's what, that's what I think good leadership brings across the board. Thank you. Along with that, I'd like to say, Mr. Klobuchar's been a long trip. Again, it's amazing. I think back twenty years ago, and we go, what are we in for here? We knew it was a problem, and we started investigating, investigating, spending every hour after work going on, went through, got five years of law records, everything that transpired five years prior to us getting elected. To find out that the city manager at the time, and the mayor at the time, and other people were involved in purchasing a million dollars of a property that was out of contingency of the Lord of People, and I felt that was a hundred percent wrong, without having people speak in behalf of that. And left the city in a lurch of millions of dollars, shortchanging a pension fund, and doing other things, to name a few. Then when we got in, we fired the former city manager, appointed Mr. Klobuchar, we were like putting the pressure on him. Got to take this job. Got to take it. But no, I don't want to. We're in, it kept us young. So, we put some more pressure on, temporarily, yeah. So, we had a bunch of residents from up here to the podium, twenty thirty, thirty fifty, depending on how many it was, reading long speeches of why Mr. Klobuchar should be our city manager, and says, "A homegrown kid that's buried out here in high school, equally actively active and moving forward, and making strides to better his community, and why we need a homegrown person here to see how we all feel at those kinds of apartments." And it's the truth. You got, you don't know how you feel as much to live here. But hiring outside city managers isn't always the answer. And this closure made the best of him, showed us off. And twenty years later, he's made us all proud of how far, far he's brought our city as leading to us and giving us direction in what direction we should take to better our community economic development, status, and pursuing different types of businesses, making, getting our home values back together. And we come up with different strategies, many times, Andy and him, I would strategize with how we're going to redevelop this, try to help spur this economic growth, you know, and come up with different scenarios. And Ed would take it back to his staff, and they would brainstorm, and all of a sudden, here they go, and they come up with this fabulous idea. And it's worked out many times. And I'd like to say thank you for that commitment. It's been a pleasure to be your friend.
And I feel the same way about you. We've known each other for these thirty years, at least thirty years, and, you know, we've been through some battles and hardships together. And again, as I said, I appreciate your friendship, and again, I'm looking forward to working with you all. Let's make these next few years some great few years, and let.
I just want to bring up one thing you mentioned earlier. It is hard on your kids. You know, you and Diane had, against kids, and they were smaller, and it's hard on children.
And you, you, you know, it raises, you and Morgan, you raised them while you were involved in politics. And I think that you bring up a point that I think a lot of people miss, that when you take one of these positions, you're really on calls twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
Your life is not your own, and it, it really can take a toll on your family. I'm lucky, I'm blessed, everybody has been very supportive, right? And I know the sacrifices that they made, and that's why I have to remember to thank Diane, Michael, and Gina, because it wasn't always easy, and there was a lot of times I wasn't there.
Same here. Many times I would be gone in the name of the Lord. It's been, you know, COVID's actually been kind of a little relief for us to have a little more time at home. We'll do a lot of emailing back and forth, and that's a conversation I like. I did want to point it out, that was very important. Thank you. It is, I just want to say thank you to my family as well for putting up with years of not being able to serve things. And I'd like to thank Diane for putting up with all of us in absorbing your time. And I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. It's over.